Throw another one?
No, just got too busy.
There's a majority on facial hair.
Yeah. It's true. Yeah. Jerry. Yeah. I'm here.
I'm shaving mine off in solidarity with Jerry.
I don't believe it. I always wonder why people wear beards. I know they're trying to hide their face, right?
When I was a little kid, I wanted to be Nick. That's why.
I saw the finance committee, committee, the whole quarter, showing me in the pledge. Then we'll clear the roll call, please.
Commissioner Weber.
Here.
Commissioner Campbell. Commissioner Jalazinski.
Here.
Commissioner Engler.
Here.
Commissioner Marino.
Here.
Commissioner Swaney.
Here.
Commissioner Hope.
Here.
All present, Mr. Vice Chairman, except for Commissioner Campbell.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next will be approval of the agenda. We'll start with general public comment on agenda items only. We have several presentations concerning the villages or the Commission on Aging, Medical Care Facility, the Parks and Rec, and Isabella County Transportation Commission. If you have no appointments to boards or commissions, committee reports, we have several business items, including a discussion regarding fiscal year 2026 budget draft. We have no intergovernmental affairs, no administrative controller issues, no unfinished business, no new business. We'll have general public comment again, open any items you would like, and then announcements and adjournments, their motion to approve the agenda.
So will Jalazinski support Marino?
Who's been supported, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Agenda, start with general public comments. On agenda items. And seeing no one for general public comments, we'll move right into the presentations. The first one is fiscal year 2026 budget village for Isabella County Commission on Aging.
Good morning. So this is our third year now of me making the same request. And fiscal year 24, we went up to the one mil, and then I'm requesting the same for Commission on Aging for the information that I submitted. So right now, our budget is estimated at just over 3.8 million. That includes 16 different funding streams or 14 programs, and that would employ 37 employees here at the Commission on Aging, 20 full-time, 17 part-time, against across nine different pay levels. As far as our revenues right now, we're estimating a little, estimated a little excess, giving us about $7,800 excess for the year. This does cover the the third increase in the wage study that was that was approved, and then also just our increase in our services. So you know, I was just looking at some of the numbers over the last three years. We're seeing across the board about a 15% increase in our meals, our requests for services, clients that are being transported, the appointments. And with the baby boomers, that population is continuing to increase, and so we are continuing to see increases in calls for service. And so those numbers are not going to go down, and they're not going to go down for a long time. You know, older adults are living longer, which is a wonderful thing, and I think it's attributed to a lot of the services that we provide. They're able to stay in their homes longer. And so I would like, I feel very comfortable with with leaving our village request where we are. I don't feel like we're in an excess and too much, and we're being pretty conservative with our numbers as well.
Do you anticipate any loss of revenue due to Medicaid cuts coming up? They don't they don't take effect.
I don't, I don't think that we would, I don't think we would see that so much in the program that we provide as far as the Medicaid itself cuts. You know, we went back and forth, certainly with there's been some changes at the federal level, like we were going back and forth, but it was a roller coaster with our foster grandparents, senior companion program with that funding. But right now, it's, we've been, we've been approved people forward, so we're thankful for that, because that's just under 300,000 that we receive from the state that funds that program. So we are fortunate that we've been able to continue other programs in our communities. Have not, and it's because ours is state funded. And had we been completely federally funded, ours would have been shut down. So you know, we've had a lot of years of almost feeling like we were complaining like, oh, we have to jump through all these hoops at the federal level, and we don't receive any funding, but now that grace gave us our programs to continue. So that was one thing. As far as our other federal programs, the older American adult, or the older American Act dollars, we've not heard of any cuts. Everything is, they've submitted all of our information, and they've moved forward. All of our grant applications and everything are the same amounts right now. But you'd never know until those budgets are finalized where the numbers will come in. Right now, we feel pretty good with it.
Yes, sir. Go ahead. You're great. Just wondering, I haven't been at 20 of your meetings in a while, but I know like some of the volunteer drivers and everything, been there a long time. Are you getting some new people on there?
Yeah, they've done, they've been really working on recruiting. And we always need more. Our meal routes are getting longer and longer because we're getting more and more individuals and needing it. So you know, we're always pushing for drivers especially. But they definitely have gotten some new ones, because you know, a lot of our drivers, a lot of our volunteers are older adults themselves, and so we've been always pushing, always pushing for more, but they they have close, we have close to 300 active volunteers. It's incredible. We have such great support here.
So I'm going to make a comment. It just relates to all the requests for the village, and it doesn't reflect my thinking, but we do get comments from the public that some of the fund balances are exhausting, and we should reduce the amount of millage to bring it more online. You know, we don't get enough information to know that. We depend on various agencies that come before us. They know their operation better than we do. But perhaps in the future, maybe there's some way we could address that with, you know, the fact that you got this much fund balance, and this is what you see as challenges coming up to be able to defend that.
And I have, I have our information in front of me, and I can just give you, just share that with you. So right now, as far as our total fund balance is just over 3.2 million dollars. But that is, we have those designated funds. So as far as our unreserved fund balance, that would just be like what we would have, we have it less than 20% of our budget. So that's 765,000. Everything else is specifically earmarked. So we have we have a building improvement fund, which is something that George Green had set up with Brenda a long time ago, saying that we needed to have a certain amount in this line, that we needed to replace the roof on this building, we had the money set. So that's there. We have our working capital, which that's 1.7 million, which is what we have to have in that account to cover and to keep our expenses covered until our millage dollars do come in each year. And then we have our vested benefit, which is just under 82,000, and that itself would just be if we had to shut the doors today, that's what we owe our staff. And so we have to have that money set there so that we can pay them what is owed to them from accounting. So as far as our unreserved fund balance, it's 765,000.
If then you over well.
Yeah. So I feel really comfortable with that. We're less than 20% of our budget. I think that's, I think that's a reasonable amount for an unreserved fund balance.
Thank you.
Yeah.
This building is what, early 90s?
It was 2008.
2008.
Yeah, so 17. So things are starting, I mean, Steve, I mean, we're talking all the time about things, and it's been great helping me like, you know, map out over the next few years, like what we're going to need. Like, we had a lot of work on our air handling units just this last year, and I'm sure we're going to have some big expenses coming with our HVAC system and our boilers. And you know, things are starting, things are starting to to get tired, so.
This warranty that we kind of extend for building maintenance just recently to for improvements, and I think we're talking about roofing.
The roof max, we got a three year.
Yeah, three year.
Yep.
Money come from building improvement for that, 90%?
From us. It comes out of our budget, COA budget. So I budgeted that in for this next year, for that three-year program with the roof. That's, so that's in my actual fiscal year 2023 budget for the next, for the next three years of the week.
Thanks.
Great. Any other question? Comments? I do see a lot of people using the pickleball.
Good.
Yeah.
Good. Yeah, I mean, it is, it's a beautiful place up there. So there's a lot of people out walking and we keep promoting and trying to get more and more to come out, but it is a busy, busy location.
Yeah, yeah. Congress, Congress get meals. That seemed like the numbers were starting to drop off a little bit, and you're, we're doing more of the delivered meals. Is that still?
Yeah, and that, and that has been, that has been a norm. That that has been a norm across the country, really. Like, the congregation was really a dying breed, and the HDM, the home delivered meal is coming up. So let, but last year was the first year that I didn't have to go to area agency where we received funding, those grant fundings, and asked them to transfer some from our congregation to home delivered, because our congregation is starting to catch up. So now, but I, and I attribute that to the amazing ladies that we have working at all those sites, because they're planning such great activities, they're enticing people to come out, trying to encourage them to come out. And we're getting more and more folks coming out to those sites, which is wonderful, because then that's, you know, that's what we want. But we certainly are going to serve meals to people who can't get out of their homes. But those who can, we want to encourage them to come out, like, don't be isolated. Get out, be around people. We saw that during COVID. That was, that was very detrimental. But yeah, they're definitely, they have, they have done a great job, and they're bouncing back.
Good.
Yeah.
All right. Appreciate you being here.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thanks. And we will move that item to next week's regular meeting, and the next item is the Isabella County Medical Care Facility at One Mill. Alyssa Haynek, who told us not, could not be here today, but she will be here next week.
Yeah, she sends her regards. Yeah, she will be here for the next regular board meeting to do the presentation and answer questions that you may have. But I at least wanted to get this in front of you now, along with everything else. Either way, there's questions before, and if you're ready.
Can we get that for our email for the meeting? Budget? For the, for next meeting.
Yes, yes.
Yes. They want to give her a heads up that there'll probably be a question on the use of the fund balance and moving forward.
I will, I will. Thank you. And I think that's a great question to ask.
Yeah, make sure that, I guess, she knows about reserved and undeserved, or that presented for us. I mean, that's important.
Sure.
I will let her know.
Thanks, thanks.
And we will move that item to next week's meeting. And the next one is the Isabella County Parks and Recreation 0.35.
Morning. So our request is just for our full 0.35 again this year. That has done budgeted allocation since this village was first approved by the voters in 2012, it hasn't increased. The two renewals that have happened have been at the same level, so this 0.35 has been consistent all the way since 2012. Obviously, in that 13-year span, there's been an incredible amount of inflation. And so, you know, I do feel that we have been cognizant of how we're running our operation in order to keep the village at that level, and to keep revenues filling in the gaps, and to keep operations running smoothly, and to keep being able to do improvements and offer quality facilities to the community while keeping that village at the same level. So between the eight parks, there's roughly 20 miles of trail. We have the two modern and the one rustic campground. And we just discussed our revenues at our most recent Parks Commission meeting, which was last week. And I actually have that in front of me. So our gross sales year to date are just over 400,402,847, which is actually a 1.7% increase from where we were at year to date last year. So the parks are bringing in a significant amount of revenue towards our budget. They're performing well, trending well compared to past years. But again, there's only so many ways we can make revenue. We can charge for camping, we can charge for water access sites, we can charge for park entrance. But throughout the industry, certain things like trail use, playground availability, those things just don't generate revenue. And so that's where the village comes in, and it helps us to offer those things still to our community in a safe way. And, you know, fill in those gaps. The other great thing about the village is, I think we've brought several large grants before the board over the past few years, and having this, these village dollars allows us to leverage on those grant applications to say, if we can get this money from the state, you know, we have the the funds to maintain this property and to match that 25% requirement. So also wanted to give an update. We had currently, we just did timesheets, we current, so I have the number right in my head. We have 49 staff right now. So that includes our full-time permanent staff and then seasonal. So we have 13 permanent staff, and then the rest of those 49 are seasonals. We're actually a little bit understaffed from where we should be. We haven't been able to have a night ranger out at our here at campground, because we just couldn't fill that position this year. So that's the amount of people right now with the way our operation is structured that it takes to run a season. And so you know, obviously, these village dollars are are important for making that all happen. Talking about fund balance, because obviously that is a question that everybody wanted to get into. So as of when we pulled our June 30th report, which is a little bit outdated, but I had that one with me, our unreserved fund balance was right around 1.3, well, really 1.4 million, if you round up. Every year, if you look at our budgets, we are, we are spending out of fund balance to maintain the budget each year. And then if you look at something that we've talked with Finance Director and with Brian Smith about, and we've, we've had conversations about, if you look at our designated funds, we really should be shifting some more money from unreserved into those funds, because, for example, right now, for vehicle replacement, 26,000, I think we all know, even a, even a half-ton work pickup right now is going for more than that. Our land acquisition fund is sitting at 115,000. You know, again, back in, did we close in 2024, we bought four acres, it cost us $100,000. So realistically, moving forward, we probably should be shifting some more money into our, so just so everyone knows, our, our designated funds within our fund balance, we have vehicle replacement, equipment replacement, land acquisition, and then projects, which would be any sort of capital improvements that we need to do. And then we have that unrestricted. I know Commissioner Jalazinski brings up from time to time that if the Fisher Annex were to go up for sale, that would be something we would need to be in a position to move on, probably rapidly, and and make a deal on that to maintain Deerfield Park as it is. I don't think 115,000 is is going to cover that. So again, you know, these are probably, the designated funds are probably lower than where they realistically need to be. And so I think, you know, if there's, if there's anything to be said about where our fund balance is at, we're definitely relying on it. We can move some around to make sure that we have funds there for specific things. And we're working really hard not to ask the community for more money. We're working hard not to raise fees, and we definitely don't want to have an overinflated fund balance, but I, I personally think it's in a healthy place right now, other than needing to move some more designated funds into those categories. Any questions on our fund balance?
Do people ever donate land or money to parks or parks?
In my time, that hasn't happened. One of the discussions that we had last year, you know, around village planning was that it would be nice for us to have a friends of Isabella County Parks group that would allow us to do a lot of different things, and it would also be sort of a liaison with the community for anyone who did want to donate. So that's something that it's kind of on the back burner, but I would like to see happen sometime in the next few years, especially before we would approach our next village renewal. That would be something that would be nice for us to get in place.
Also, is there any word about connection between care park railway path?
Oh, the community pathways?
Yes.
Um, really, we're sort of reliant on that group making progress, right? Because our rail trail sort of is what it is, and we do have an interest in that trail. So the community pathways trail goes along 127. From what, it starts in Shepherd, I believe, and it's coming towards Mount Pleasant. Obviously, if it followed further north along 127, it could eventually connect to our Pemmercat rail trail. And then we would finally be plugged in with some, some statewide trail system, or some, you know, community-wide connecting trail systems. Whereas I just, though, the director of the CVV is always saying that we're in a trail desert, because we have local trails, but we're not connected to outside systems. So that's a project that we're certainly in support of, but we don't have really a a say in or a skin in the game, other than just wanting to see it happen and maybe writing some letters of support. But it, on another point, when you use the word connection, it reminded me, I wanted to mention when we talked about fund balance. We have 305,000, I believe, dollars committed through the tribe, through ARPA dollars, and through just our budget currently for the Cold Water Lake Sewer Connection. We already pretty much know that that's not going to cover the project. And so looking at fund balance from that project fund would certainly be, that would be a project that those dollars we know would probably be going towards. So I did want to mention that, too.
That would just be the hope of it's not to turn the park, you know, sources for the park that would be in the future. So that's just basically getting it.
Correct. Getting it established. So, yeah, the connection, the grinder station, and then we've already talked about seeking DNR grant funds to help us in phases, probably make certain sections of the park full hookup, where they would have sewer connection, electric and water connection right there at the site. Then obviously, we could, we could increase fees and bring in more revenue, and the park would also be a lot more attractive to some of the larger RP campers if we had those connections.
Yeah. First, go ahead. Dr. Hatz, I think you've done a great job coming in and, and you're, you know, as far as, you know, running a very tight ship and, and probably even a little, you know, little losses as far as, you know, taking from the fund balance. And I think that the parks is one of the apartments in county that needs more support, especially the, the two things, the Fisher Annex, planning for the future for, you know, being able to purchase that. I think that commissioners and administration should work with you to make a plan to make sure we can have the money ready that happens. Because if we're not getting started about it.
Absolutely.
But the, you know, real big one for me is making sure that cold water sewer hookup happens. That happens, that like our, like you know, our water supply, our, the Chippewa River Basin. We are moving back to a time where we're not having septic overflowing into our water stream that people are playing in, in the ponds and in cold water. Cold Water Lake has traditionally been very bad, and this year, this summer, we've seen improved numbers of E. coli rate or lower rates this summer. I don't know if that's you know, significant, because there's something happening, people are making some movements, or if it's just the summer, we'll see.
The field city probably helped.
Yeah.
The sewer went through there.
Yeah. So, yeah, so all those, those rates are much, much lower, and, you know, to complete that project just secures our water in that area. I think the, the, really, the only other major site is the North Branch, which is still just horrendous. And we'll have to figure that out, but I'm sorry, now I'm getting off of tangent. Point is, I, that I see the parks as a, as a place that we need to try to find more support to. Good. Yeah.
We'll certainly take it.
I think you're shaving off skin as you go in year to year a little bit. You know? It's tight.
Yeah, and I think we feel that a little bit. The other thing I did want to mention, too, just, just to give an idea of use. I had our administrative coordinator look this morning, and, and so far, and we still have a chunk of season left to go, but we have sold 10,203 daily vehicle permits and 2,233 annual vehicle permits. And then usually in the parks industry, they'll do a vehicle multiplier of times three. So if you think of all of those vehicles coming in, times three, we're serving tens of thousands of people. And then, you know, we have weddings and things like that out at Deerfield, where they're not buying vehicle permits if they're coming in for the wedding. So there's, there's some uncaught visits there, too. So I just wanted to mention that, that we do have data that shows that, you know, we're, we are serving tens of thousands of people at these facilities every summer. And I know certainly people, people love Cold Water Lake, people love Deerfields, people are out there using the rail trail. So we're doing what we can to keep those facilities at a level that people want to use them. But we're also trying to keep fees low and not ask for more tax dollars from the community. And so that's where we're coming in with this point through five village, and with our fees where they're at, and I hope that the board can support us in where we're at right now with our budget.
I was just going to say, the fund balance for parks is, to me, below, having been a prior Parks and Recreation Director, you've got huge infrastructure. Something goes down, you have huge costs behind it, land acquisition. Even if you get grants and you're lucky to get a 75% match, those dollars would disappear real quick. But also for this sewer project, I know we did commit, even though we moved it into our fund balance, we did commit to providing 200,000, 250,000.
250.
So I don't know if you fact that into your budget.
Yeah.
I would hope the commission would under that.
That is factored in there, so I would hope so, too.
The issue was, price keeps going up, so.
Yeah. Well, and that's another great point. I mean.
Is that right?
Yeah, it is. We're seeing projects. But it gets more exciting to run every day.
I check the great camera, see.
Any other questions for me? Okay.
No, thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. And we'll move that to next week's regular meeting. And the last one is fiscal year 26 budget village for Isabella County Transportation Commission. The Executive Director, Rick Collins.
Morning, everybody.
Morning.
We're, we're all in to grace your company this morning. I may here to request a village levy for our next budget in fiscal year 26. Before I do that, I'd like to talk a little bit about what we've done last year, what we're doing this year so far in terms of passenger transportation. For those of you that don't know, we got a, but we provide door-to-door transportation throughout all Isabella County, but also connect to all of our neighboring counties. Going to Grasham County, Flair County, going to McCosta, and Midland County to connect with neighboring transit agencies. So there's a regionalization of transits, and people can get from Isabella County to all of our neighboring areas. A lot of people don't know exactly how big our entity really is. We currently operate, maintain 43 vehicles, mostly small duty cutaway buses, but we have some medium-duty buses up to 32 feet long, varying passenger types, et cetera, et cetera. All of our vehicles are lift-equipped, so we can accommodate persons in wheelchairs or any other mobility devices that they may have. Last year, we transported about 333,000 passengers on our buses. This year, as of July 31st, we've carried over 303,000 passengers on our buses. Uh, this year, as of July thirty first, we've carried over three hundred three thousand passengers on our buses. Uh, it's around about eleven percent increase as of July thirty first. Uh, with the rest of the next couple of months, our fiscal year ends in October. Uh, I would expect that those numbers could get up to fifteen to sixteen percent increase ridership from last year to this year. Um, based on the, you know, school starts up, our our business gets a little busier, obviously. Um, last year, we had on time percentage of about eighty nine percent. No, I'm sorry, here today, this year, we're on time about eighty nine percent. Uh, that's industry standard somewhere around eighty two percent of the time on time. Talking about our budget for next year, we submitted a budget that has expenses of about seven point two million dollars. Uh, expected revenues of about seven point one million dollars. Our intent is to use the pond balance to. To balance our budget in that regard. Requesting a village levy of point eight six two. That is the same levy that we've requested uh from the board since two thousand and ten. In two thousand and four, our voters approved a village language for us for up to one mil. So even though we have voter approved village of up to one mil, we routinely have requested point eight six two. Um, since two thousand and ten and full disclosure, in the years of two thousand and six to two thousand and nine. Uh, we did ask for a little more than that, two fifty. Oh, six and oh seven, we asked for point nine. Oh, eight, oh, nine, we uh asked for the full levy amount, point nine nine two nine. Uh, since ever since then, it's been point eight six two. Most of our dollars go towards people. What we do is all people based. We need drivers to be able to operate the buses, be able to get the people to where they need to go. It takes maintenance to maintain those vehicles, et cetera, et cetera. Costs money to operate people, wages go up, fringes go up. That's our biggest expense increases with with our people costs. Eighty percent of our budget goes towards providing the roads, the rest goes that and et cetera, et cetera. Most of ours, most of our budget is purely operational, like our variable admin. In terms of our fund balance, uh, it does exist. We do have one. It's important to know, I think, how that fund balance came to be first and foremost. And it really triggered around COVID. If you, it's, if you look back at our budgets. In twenty nineteen to twenty twenty. Well, I guess I should first start talking about our budget process. Our budget for fiscal year twenty six has already been submitted to MDOT. We're required to submit that to MDOT in February twenty five. So that budget's already been submitted to the state, it's already approved, all of that. That's before the state even has their budget. We have no idea what the state appropriation is going to be for fiscal year twenty six. This particular year, the federal appropriations just equally uh up in the air. So it's really difficult when planning to budget these types of scenarios. So we've already submitted our budget in in February to the state. Back when COVID existed in twenty twenty, twenty one, twenty two, twenty three. We submit our budgets in February. And then there were COVID assistance dollars and 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 the CARES funds and the PRISA Act and. All of these different COVID assistance dollars. The feds or the state decided to implement those to transit agencies throughout the state. Through our federal reimbursement rates, historically, that's eighteen percent. During COVID, the state decided after our budget cycle was already completed. The state decided to disperse those dollars through our federal appropriations. So when we historically, including next year and this year, get eighteen percent from the feds during the years of COVID. We received thirty six to forty percent. This all happened after the budget. So we didn't have any, in my opinion, prudent way to spend that extra revenue. We didn't forecast that extra revenue. We had no expectation of that. The prudent thing was, in my opinion, to invest the money. So that's what we did. We we put most of our fund balance into investments. Uh, through Michigan classes, St. Paul's Investments that the county uses, and also uh through. Normal certificates of deposits in the banks. In the meantime, we have all kinds of capital needs um that. Haven't been met. Typically, you know, in terms of rolling capital or buses. We're pretty good at getting state and federal grants to cover those capital needs, replacing buses. Everybody acknowledges, obviously, transportation needs buses. But they don't really acknowledge any of the other capital needs that exist in operating a business. Parking lots, building, windows, uh, all of these other capital expenses, we don't really get any other assistance from. We need to have a mechanism in which to pay for these capital needs. For example, right now, our our parking lot is in great disrepair. Uh, looking at replacing that cap, uh, that parking lot to something that can carry the weight of our vehicles routinely. Uh, we're looking at close to two million dollars to chew up and and redo the the substrate and rebuild that parking lot. Just the parking lot alone is gonna cost over two million dollars. Uh, we have a paint booth in our building that's needs replaced. Uh, that will leave a gaping hole in our our. Our roof and we'll have to then replace the roof and replace that. Um, windows are twenty four years old. All of these things are up for replacement. Uh, all the while. I have an administrative staff of three people, myself included. So we we don't have planners, we don't have engineers, we don't have architects, we don't have any of that stuff housed at the Isabella County Transportation Commission. For operating buses. Um, so it takes us a little time to get the experience that we need and the expertise in for consultants and engineers. To come in and give us a real good roadmap on how to spend those capital, capital projects in in a way that's reasonable. Um, and and that's partly why our fund balance is where it's at. All at the same time, too. Um, as I stated, you know, we have a three tiered revenue source. We get local shares from this village. And our and our contracts that we have with our partners and our fare boxes, that's our local revenue. And then we have a state revenue that's based on a state appropriation that varies from year to year based on legislators. And then we have a federal appropriation also varying year to year based on legislatures. All those pieces work together and without that local investment to be able to. To draw in those other revenue sources, um, we won't be able to maintain our operations if we just want. It it's. It's difficult when. Throughout COVID and we had these cares assistance dollars. We were also told to forecast and expect. A fiscal cliff that was approaching in the transit industry. And that fiscal cliff is now. And for example, last two years ago, our state reimbursement rate was forty percent. Last year, it was reduced to thirty five percent of our eligible expenses. This year, even though the state's budget hasn't been done yet, our original forecasting, our budget that we've submitted and have been approved by the state. Was expecting thirty percent. So that's a ten percent decrease in state revenue two years uh that we faced. And the federal revenues are still up in the air as well. So, you know, quite frankly, we have no clue as of this day. Uh, what kind of state or federal dollars we're gonna receive next year. I have full expectation that we're gonna be spending. Some portion of this fund balance just to maintain continuity services while the state federal government gets their. Ducks in a row, uh, with their federal appropriations and state appropriations. So that's another reason why, too, we chose to sit on money rather than spend the money on immediate needs. Because I was told throughout the whole time, this fiscal cliff is coming. And it was very important to me and it's very important to people that use our services, that we maintain continuity of service. We don't close our doors when the state closes its doors, et cetera, et cetera. So. Uh, in two thousand and nineteen, just to give an idea of the type of economic status of people we're dealing with. In two thousand and nineteen, uh, MDOT and Michigan State University did a survey of our our passengers. And they spent some time on our bussy, let some people in road per week and they surveyed our people. Sixty seven percent of the people that they surveyed had a combined annual household income. This is in twenty nineteen, less than fifteen thousand dollars a year. Twenty seven percent of those people had an annual household income of less than five thousand dollars a year. So we're dealing with people that have extreme financial needs. And, you know, if you just just calculate, you know, even at a two dollar a trip fare rate. Five times a week to go back and forth to Burt, twenty dollars a week. When you're dealing with five thousand dollars a year, that's your money. So, you know. I I ask that you keep that in mind, um. We're trying to support people that need the sports bus. Yeah, and our services connect people to every other service in the county. So bus drop somebody up here ten minutes. So, I mean, we're everywhere. We take people to all schools, we take people to dial, all the appointments can't be created. Anything you can think of. And we're always looking to put more more service on the road to lower wait times and ride times to make it more functional for everybody. And when I leave work and I go home, I have the privilege of just swinging into the grocery store and grab the little bread real quick. People that use their buses, they don't have that luxury. So, you know, they have to provide our service. So the quicker we can make that service, the shorter the ride time are. Shorter the wait times are, the more functional it is.
Similar to the same question I asked last year, uh. Properly said a little bit. I know there was some criticism because we had all. Yes. To get drivers, drivers, buses go around. Is that situation improved? Are you, how are your driver situation? I know. Industry's kind of gotten a little better, but drivers are still.
Yeah, yeah, we we just had a hiring class. We haven't hired part time in a really long time because we weren't attracting anybody without operating for benefits. We we transitioned some years ago during COVID, hiring full time folks. We just tried hiring part time. We got a class of four people that just started. We were hoping for ten to twelve part time employees. Uh, we're still under par in terms of our employment. Yes, the higher on bonuses that we did does help. Uh, you know, and speaking to the the bonus scenario, um, you know, that's a, that's a cost that we can control. You know, when we give a bonus versus a wage increase, that's something that goes in one budget and it doesn't have legacy costs ongoing. And um, you know, that helps us to be able to retain and attract employees without having ongoing expenses.
How many drivers?
We currently employ sixty one full time, twenty twenty. Drivers only, I'm sorry, it's forty three full time and twelve part time drivers.
Yes, sir. I have two questions. What is our TAP revenue?
Uh, that's the Rural Transit Assistant Program. That's used primarily for rural transits by training. Uh, it's a federal grant and um it's five thousand dollars, forty five hundred dollars.
Okay, another question is. Where where is the con- contract for bus rides? Getting bus rides.
We we knew that was a third party vendor, so the the vendor does all the sales, they do all the recruitment, they do all the bill collecting. Uh, they do the design and the application of the wrap. We get a percentage of fee uh for a monthly, I believe, but. I think the wrap aside of a bus is around thirty four hundred dollars and then there's ongoing monthly fees around three dollars a month.
Okay, thanks. And so how like an organization or a company wants to do that?
Dynamic bus design. They got a website, their links on our website.
Dynamic.
You know, we have and add, uh, you know, the veterans, veterans ask for a grant every year um for a bus route and that's what our buses.
Uh, you said you had a paint booth that needs to be replaced. What do you, what do you use the paint booth?
Honestly, that was put in uh when our building was constructed. We have used paint booth. The road commission uses our paint booth to paint their uh.
Okay, um, is it just one fair, standard fair, no matter where you're going or?
Anywhere inside of Isabella County for regular eighteen to six year old adults is two dollars per passenger. Disabled and seniors are one dollar per passenger, under eighteen is a dollar fifty per passenger. If you travel outside of our county, then that bear doubles.
And and how far will you go into a neighboring county?
It depends. We have different relationships with different types. Uh, the best relationship I'd say we'd have is this one, that's the city of Elma. Uh, we started running Elma four years ago, I think it was. Uh, we actually go into Elma and we drive as far south as Sonic Lodge. Um, the Royal Road, Sonic Lodge, twenty seven, and then uh back to to M forty six, back this way. Otherwise, we meet the other ones at the county line, so uh Oil City, Sitgo, uh Wickbeck Sinclair, uh Bates and Remus. We pretty much just stay around the county line.
And then uh, see the fare box revenue, four hundred thousand out of a budget, that's seven point one million, that's something about five point. Five nine percent of the your total budget.
Yeah.
But that's good. Keep those fares low for those folks that need them.
Yeah, I mean, that's that's where my focus is. I mean, you gotta be mindful of of people who use the service and what their needs are.
Okay, any other questions? All right, thanks, sir.
Thanks.
And we will move that item to next week's regular meeting. Uh, next is a scenario presentation by our finance director.
Oops, forgot my mouse. Good morning, everyone. Turn the video on here. Should scurrying for you. Make this trigger. First, I might need your assistance with this. Yeah. If we can, it'll make it easier for seeing the the reports and the way some of the data comes up. Why he sticks in that area, helping me figure out, make that bill a little bit more. Let me give you a little thousand dollar purchase of the software. Platform, uh, we know that it's gonna be a little over twenty thousand dollars a year. Maintenance fees, uh, support fees for that, the subscription to it. Um, I just wanted to show you guys a brief presentation of just some of the small things this software platform can do. It's going to be an awesome tool for us to use. Yeah, I think that'll work great. Thank you. I appreciate it. So one other thing I wanted to point out to you folks, when um I start bringing up some numbers here and you see fiscal year twenty six. That was, um, I gave our fiscal year twenty six uh requested department requested budget draft number two, the scenario to upload. Um, a week or two ago, obviously, I didn't have draft number two where we're at today that we're gonna talk about later. So just want you to know that those numbers aren't set in stone. That's not our adopted budget. Obviously, we haven't got to that process yet. So just keep that in mind when you're looking at the numbers. Um, also, I I want you to know that the assumptions and initiatives um that I'm going to show you guys and use. Um, there, it's not actual data, it's not actual estimates. Um, these are kind of theoretical. Let's plug in some numbers and see what happens here, so we can see how it impacts us going down the road. So with that, let me uh wanted to show you, let's use a what if our property taxes increase. So let's take a look at that. So we would come over here to our revenue growth rate tables, come down here to property taxes. And you can see by looking at this that you're not seeing fiscal year twenty six right now. That's because when we're using operational assumptions. It's all going to be based off from fiscal year twenty-six going forward. So if we say that, hey, let's, let's say that we think it's going to be. Uh, a four percent increase in property taxes growth every year. What that's going to do. Is that's going to build off from fiscal year twenty-six. It's going to add four percent to it. Then we're going to build off from twenty-seven, add four percent. So now that we've put those in, say, save. I'm going to slide my screen over here. You guys still see it okay? We're going to take a peek at general fund. And we're going to come down here and I'm going to open up taxes so that we can see that property tax line. So that is right there. Can you see it all the way across? So we can. It actually goes way further across, but for some reason, the way it's, uh, showing it up here, it's not letting me slide it over further, but this actually goes out ten years. Uh. So you can see the changes in that property tax revenue line item. So we've got right here's twenty-six. This is what we're budgeted so far. And then you can see that each year thereafter, it's building four percent on there. Now, if I scroll down a little bit more for you, now you can look at the impacts on. Uh. On your fund balance and where it's adding to it. Now, that's assuming nothing else is changing. No, no expenditures are changing. No other revenues are changing. Just that impact alone is showing you what that. Would do, looking at your fund balance, whether we're adding to it, whether we're, we're using and what we're ending up with. Um, so that's just one, one tool, one thing we can look at that it can do for us. Um, for example, if we were to have a lot of growth. Coming into Isabella County, obviously, that's going to, especially if it's industrial growth or commercial, obviously, that's going to increase our tax base, right? So this is something that we're probably going to use quite often to look at. Um, I would work with probably the treasurer every year. And equalization, as soon as they, you know, keep pressing, gives us those numbers that, that's going to kind of give us an idea of what we're looking at and be able to kind of look. Towards the future a little bit more on that. Um, any questions on the, on this, the property taxes alone, what this is showing? Okay, another one I'd like to show you is. Slide back over so I can see here. And I need to take the property taxes back out. There we go. Save it. Now I'd like to show you what happens if health insurance increases every year, which we've been going through this, right? So, so let's take a peek at what happens with health.
Sure. You read my mind.
They don't watch your major mind. I wish, I wish I could show this putting in a negative number. Um, and you never know, it, it, it very well might one of these years, but let's come over to health insurance then. So what if, let's put in ten percent. What if it rose ten percent over the next three years? Let's just say three years.
It's not conservative enough.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, twenty.
Just the impact though.
That's pretty optimistic.
Yeah, let's just for the sake of this, keep us from crying at the table here. Let me save that. Now let's slide over here. So I just updated everything. Let me go to general government. Here's all of our, uh, departments that impacted. Now you probably can't see the impact so much right there. Let me scroll down a little bit for you. Just take a peek right here alone at, uh, since the right, come on, my computer's not. There's twenty-five, there's twenty-six. So keep an eye on twenty-six and twenty-seven. For your total, uh, expenditures right here. Now I'm going to click another button up here. I'm going to have it compare for you so that you can see. What happens when we compare it? What the impact was. So there you should have seen a different tab, see the update. There's another button. Let me click through. What the difference of the base two scenario one. Here's how bad the impact was. If it goes up ten percent every single year, that's the impact to every one of those departments right there. Yeah, it's scary. Um. And then you can see how, you know, what it's going to do to your eating into your fund balance. I just, I just wanted to show that yucky one, but we know that that's reality to, to us, right? Health insurance, we just never know what it's going to do. Very difficult also to plan to say, okay, how about ten percent every year? No idea. But it's something that we need to be looking at. Uh, it's something that. We should have been looking at a long time ago. I think it would have helped us realize a long time ago that we needed to start cost sharing, probably before or. Plan other ways to have revenues come in to cover these expenditure or something because obviously we're, we're upside down on it. So, um, this is going to help us plan for, plan for our future. And, and how we're going to keep, um, being able to offer the same level of benefits. Not gouge our employees awful and, um, still be able to, you know, us to sustain that cost and pay for it. So good tool here for that, um, for health insurance as well. Um. Last one I wanted to show you is just a simple, let's take revenues and expenditures as a whole. And, and let's just go, okay, revenue is going to grow, say by two and a half percent. Uh, let's say that expenditure is going to go at, grow at three and a half percent. What is that going to do? I need to take this operational assumption back out of here. Otherwise, it's going to skew our, we're going to look at this and go, ooh, that doesn't work, right? So. For the revenue growth, we're going to go down to an initiative builder. Come down here, we have one built in for revenue and expenditures. So we're going to come down here to revenues. And let's build in. Growth rate. So right here, uh, let's say they're going to grow by two and a half. Far enough out. Now let's go to our operating expenses. Let's tell it that that's going to grow a little faster. And that obviously has happened to us in the past. Okay, save. Scroll on down here. For a little bit, make sure it's just general fund. Sure, these initiatives are off because we're not looking at those ones right now. Right now, we're going to turn this one on. So then I scrolled down a little bit. You can see here, we start using fund balance, right? Uh, very first year already, if, if fiscal year twenty-six going off draft number two. If those percentages were to hold true on growth rates, we're actually eating into our fund balance. So just, I just wanted to show, you know, what that looks like for us. Um, you get out into these years over here. You can see there's no change. It's because I only ran those growth rates out so many years. I didn't tell it to keep on going. I would like to show you what the difference is on that. So. Look here, I tell the difference. Here's your difference. So here's your revenues. There's your increases because they're growing. But here's your expenditures growing. See those deficits? And then we come down here and then you can see, you know, the results of those. Just wanted us to be able to, to see that with our eyes. Sometimes we can talk about numbers, but it's really hard, yeah, like. Maybe see, to see what it comes out. So again, these are not budgeted numbers. These are not estimates that we're using. I just wanted to show. Uh, some of what the software can do for us. And obviously it does a ton more, uh, than what I've showed you. And, um, I'm still learning and working with the scenario team. Uh, they will upload our adaptive budget as soon as you folks adopt it, hopefully on September sixteenth. So we'll have it updated. And then, uh, looking forward to really diving into this and using it a lot more. Keep in mind, we can go into individual funds and everything too, uh, for today's sake. I only showed you general fund. Any questions?
I just, oh, why at the first? I was just going to say, it'd be nice to be able to see the projection before we adopt the budget to know.
Right. Next year you will be able to. Uh, this year I can't, I can't do that. We don't, they don't have. Um, the platform built. To project off from accurately. We're not even done with twenty-five yet. So I can't. Till that one is complete, twenty-five has to be all completed. Um, and that's going to be our audited completed one with actual activity that we can build. So until after, after September thirtieth, I can, but typically it's not till March till it blows out the year. So unfortunately this year I can't give that to you, but I certainly can next year and I definitely will be using it.
I'm sure everybody's looking forward to that.
Yeah.
Back of our minds. We know the. Uh, the negatives of the last projection that we had resolve.
Yes. And, and keep in mind, we can, if the board so chooses, we can have, put a session together of just working with the software. Of, of certain scenarios that, that, you know, you folks would like to see.
I think that might be a good time at the goal setting.
Goal set.
March. March, April to have this and then the audit will be done. And then we can have more in-depth dive into this year and next.
Yeah.
Well, okay. I just remember when I was on the city commission, uh, we had Nancy Ridley and she, she, you know, it wasn't a sophisticated process, but there was. Uh, she could build scenarios if we did this and that, that this would excel and that really did help. So this is so much more powerful, so much more.
Absolutely.
I wish you could have popped it or that, that we didn't try. And what I think is nice on this episode is that we're not relying on formulas in an Excel spreadsheet and there could be an error made and stuff like that, that it's just. Kind of takes a lot of the errors out of forecasting.
Speaking of that, let me show you one other thing. So if I come here and I click on this and say explain.
Yes.
Here you go. It lets us know what's in here. And if I click that and go into it even further, it breaks it down even more. Um, I wish I would have hit that explain button before you on one of the other, uh, assumptions I did because it'll, it'll even tell you like, oh, you're choosing to add two percent to this. Oh, you chose to, so it'll tell you what changed on the base every time so that we don't lose track of where we're at, what we've done. Um, no having to worry about formulas getting, you know, messed up, uh, used incorrectly and.
Yeah, on the, I think it's really going to help on the expense side. Especially with some of the line items that we have built, child care fund and the MERS where. We can do a lot of forecasting and estimated and so can't be surprised. Far reaching. When we get to the, the, uh, income side on the property taxes, that's going to be a little more stable. Those you got. Uh, you got the state factor in there. They use blending. So even look back like in the eighties when the property taxes. Drop, dropped twenty-nine percent one year. They still blend that. So it doesn't. Take effect a while. So the income, I think it's going to be pretty stable compared to what state, uh, factor is because that's.
Yes.
Proposal unless there's a lot of sales and. It'll propose that, but.
The only way I think you'd see big changes on your revenue side is if the county actually came up with a new service, a new, you know. Some kind of new service that.
That's how I said, that's going to be pretty stable where we can. On the expense side, especially those ones where we have no ideas where they're going to come, then we can kind of be prepared. We won't be shocked if, you know, child care fund.
One of the things that would really be great, uh, in regard to that child care fund is here not too long ago, we, uh, brought a budget amendment in front of the board. Uh, the child care fund was able to cover the salaries and wages of some of those employees in the child care fund. So we did the budget amendment, you know, to take that out of, uh, general fund, put it over there. So one thing that's really neat that we'll be able to do is we'll be able to use those salaries and put in numbers in there and go, okay, reduce, reduce general fund by. These four in GLC because that is the, you know, the union that they're in and then increase child care fund and it is. It's going to automatically populate that for us. We're, we're going to be able to see what the impact is on general fund, what the impact is on the child care fund. So it's, it's going to be a very useful tool for us to try to make more informed decisions about our future.
Thank you. Thanks.
Very good. Um, so we have no appointments, boards and commissions. You'll get into many reports, the finance committee. And the first item is consider ratifying and placing on file the August first, two thousand twenty-five invoice list in the amount of one hundred eighty-three thousand, eight hundred thirty-three dollars and fifty cents. The August eighth, two thousand twenty-five invoice list in the amount of three hundred twenty-one thousand, seventy-two dollars and ninety-four cents. And the adjustment list dated July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. Walk us through these.
Yes, sir. First for the August first, uh, list of one hundred eighty-three thousand, eight hundred thirty-three dollars, fifty cents. The general fund portion is fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars and sixty-eight cents. And on the first cover page, you will find the invoices that were over five thousand dollars. The first one on here is at University of Michigan Health for sixteen thousand, three thirty-five, fifty-five, and that was for the July medical examiner fees. We also have for Zennaberg asphalt of twenty thousand, seven thirty-eight, forty-four, and I believe that was for asphalt around the health department parking lot. And then manpower for MRF wages and six thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollars, seventy-three cents. And then a couple of public defender appointees, a principal resident exemption, a lower tax value and then. Seventy-seven thousand, seven thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars to youth opportunity investments for directly supervised care from the child care fund.
Questions on the August first?
Just one question. On the lower taxable value. Is that to a border review process or are we getting your taxes larger? No, I'm serious. I'm kind of curious.
Lower taxable value, that would be a border review.
So the border.
I will confirm with the treasurer for the next meeting, but I'm pretty sure that that would.
Okay, they, they.
Yes.
I was looking at the process, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I understand. I just was curious.
It's a nice amount. So.
Okay, the next for the August eighth, two thousand twenty-five, total amount three hundred and twenty-one thousand, seventy-two dollars and ninety-four cents. The general fund portion is one hundred fifty-two thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars and ten cents. We've got a few more bills on here that is larger than the five thousand dollar number. Couple of these are his. Hats for five thousand, nine sixty-one and fifty-four cents for the bi-weekly animal control contract. MRP properties for the monthly rent for five-ten and six-fourteen West Pickett of seventeen thousand, ninety-one and forty-six cents. And then we have some annual software fees, uh, for August twenty-five to August of twenty-six for BSNA software. Thirty-one thousand, five hundred and eighty-two dollars and then Gaylord Seal Coating LLC. Nineteen thousand, nine seventy-six, eighty-six cents for asphalt seal coating and painting for the commission on AD. And then other various consumers' energy and well path and, uh, state of Michigan for July district and probate court change mills.
Okay, questions on the August eight?
Okay, next is the adjustments list. For July thirty-first, these are the ones that are either error was made and corrections had to be done. Or invoices were added to avoid late fees or invoices were added to have early payment discounts. There was one and two, three, four, uh, input errors that were corrected on this and the rest were done. To get the discounts or avoid late fees. And most of these are consumers' energy and according to service that you have typically seen in the past.
Okay, any questions on that? All right, move those to the regular session next week. And item two is consider approving the information security policy as. To establish requirements for protecting Isabella County's data systems and IT infrastructure.
Morning. So this is the proposed, uh, information security policy. Uh. It's pretty much setting a standard for the, uh, security for the county's data systems and technology. Uh, it's really expanding on the work that former director and I have been, uh, pushing towards and it builds on the strides that Hunter and I have, uh, been making to strengthen the county's security. Uh, using programs like Blue Mirror for SIM SOC, Duo for multi-factor authentication, Action One for vulnerability patch management. Uh, Send One for. Uh, Send One for. Uh, antivirus and. There will probably be a few future systems that we move towards like Noel before for defending or educating. Users on how to. Spot spam emails and. Prevent. More email breaches um. It essentially puts our existing security stack and procedures into operating. It's not really changing too much. It's just formalizing uh, how we secure information, manage access and encrypt sensitive data. The policy applies to all entities, all employees and third parties and devices that connect to. Anything of ours, uh, whether onsite or remote. It aligns with the best practices to help us maintain compliance with the CIS audit, lean audits and. The uh, Reeman audits. So that's gonna help us in the future with. Looking good on audits and. It just puts uh, how the county is safeguarding the services we provide to the public, protecting taxpayers, uh, resources and data. And ensuring that everyone who uses county technology understands their role in uh, securing our systems because it's, it's not just a two person job anymore, unfortunately.
Guys have been busy the last couple of months.
We have.
Been a lot of breaches. Now, was this? A recommendation to the audit process?
This was an audit comment, yes, you repeated.
Yeah, it's, it's hitting uh, Director Whitmer's uh, Reeman audit. It hits. My two big audits that I have this year, and I'm pretty sure it will run into more down the road.
We just checked another thing off that list.
On our emails. Do we have ability of capturing potential spam and then you have to click on that in order to release it or?
So we have a uh, spam filter. It's pretty good. It catches a lot of the fishy things. Um, sometimes it does catch some, or it has some false positives. That's where you guys just get ahold of me. I will release it. We will be expanding on that next year to help kind of. Fine tune the spam emails and. Really lock down like based on where in the sender potentially is coming from, like for instance, they can. Spoof my email, but it's going to be like, oh, hey, Sea Baskets usually doesn't send stuff from Fiji, so it's gonna block that. And just make it so, okay, Sea Baskets is sending from Mount Pleasant, Michigan. That's probably a good one. There'll be more stuff like that. Any other questions?
Thank you.
We'll move that to next week's, where's our meeting? And item three will be consider approving the payment of Motorola Milestone eleven, which will be the final Motorola billing. In the amount of four hundred and thirty nine thousand seven hundred and forty six dollars and eighty cents and authorized board chairperson to sign the same. And we have the sheriff online.
Good morning.
Morning.
Morning, Sheriff.
Well, I could repeat everything again, but I'll just recap quickly. So the good news is um, this is our final. Uh, invoice or should be our final invoice for sure from Motorola. The next one will be the cleanup funds that we're gonna use for the CMU County Backup Center. Um, that'll come from a local vendor versus the state. Uh, we do have one out right now to the state for reimbursement. Um, it has been submitted and received. Uh, I anticipate that to be back before this one's, you know, sent out for payment next week, but. This is the final off the four point eight million dollar grant. Um, this is kind of the almost closure, other than the final cleanup money, so. We are so close and this should all be done. This is our goal to be done by the uh, end of the fiscal year of this year.
Great, yes, sir. A question I've asked a couple of times, uh, hadn't been completed yet, but the bidirectional antennas uh, for Shepherd Schools and the tribe, have they been? Installed and tested?
So my understanding is the uh, the equipment's on order, it has not been started or installed, but I did uh, reach out at the last chief's meeting. Um, I kind of discussed that a little bit and the, and I was actually typing a email to the vendor on some follow up stuff and I was gonna include that as well, so. Um, certainly paid for, um, just not uh, implemented or up and running yet, but hopefully. I don't think it's a heavy lift to, to install this stuff, so I think um, it'll go pretty quick, but I did, they have not started the work yet.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay.
Enjoy your vacations, sir.
Thank you.
All right, and we will move that to next week's meeting, which brings us to item four, consider approving budget amendment number two thousand twenty five dash. Seventeen VOC to increase new equipment for Central Square Solutions. And authorize board chairperson to sign the same.
Back in uh, July fifteenth of twenty five, the board had approved. The uh, amount of one hundred twenty nine thousand thirty eight dollars sixty two cents for maintenance and support for the Central Square Solutions. In the financial impact portion of it, it says we will need to amend our fiscal year twenty five uh, budget for this. I failed to put in that budget amendment with the packet and so. I bring in this budget amendment for your review and hopefully approval at this time. Pardon me? That's what EMS.
This is for the CAD? Yes, okay. Sorry. This is for Central Dispatch Fund two ninety seven.
Very good. Questions on that? If not, we'll move that to next week's meeting and. Item five is discussion regarding administration approved first through third quarter budget.
Hello again. So I think in the past, if I remember right, uh, admin. Through budget or budget amendments usually came with your uh, quarterly financials when we'd go over the financial statements. And uh. Since you weren't getting those on a quarterly basis, I'm not sure where we left off with that, so I just grabbed all budget amendments that admin. The administrator controller had the ability to approve. Career budget resolution. I brought everything from the beginning of this fiscal year through the end of third quarter two years, just so that you guys have them all. I want to just make sure. And my bad, because last quarter when I brought the financials, I didn't bring these with me, I should have. So I'm gonna make sure that that uh, becomes a. Better process for you. So from now on, you'll get the. Financial statements quarterly and then you'll also uh, be getting these, any budget amendments that were approved through admin. So that you're in season, you're aware of. Uh, were there any questions on the specific ones or?
Yeah, I just want to comment, I'd like to add on, uh, one thing that uh, Finance Director Whitmer is doing from now on. As you'll see on the previous one where it's the two thousand twenty five dash seventeen VOC. We're labeling VOC, so we specifically know the ones that the board commissioners approved. And then the next ones will have admin, so you'll know exactly which ones that admin approved. So that way. You'll be able to, it makes, it clarifies it a lot more for you. That was, thank you for thinking of that.
Yeah, no problem. I just think it'd be, it's just.
Makes sense.
It does. It just makes better sense.
Any questions on those? We'll move to the next item. We'll move that, that item to next week.
That won't, that won't be moved. That's just.
Oh, okay, okay, yep, yep. Okay. And item six is discussion regarding third quarter financial reports.
Yeah. So in front of you is third quarter. Wanted to point out that the twenty four twenty five, so be your fiscal year twenty five amended budget. Uh, did change. Uh, one of the, the great, it was changed by like a hundred and one thousand, um, expenditures were reduced. Uh, for the sheriff department because there was a duplicate budget amendment entered. Um, I accidentally entered it. Didn't realize Melissa had already entered it before she left. Uh, I brought it, got it approved and I entered it again. So uh, just wanted you folks to see that that was removed. That lowered your budget down. For the expenditure, so that was the change to your.
I think all the board directors got a fall from me. Explaining that when that came up.
Okay, good, good. Just want to be transparent about that on what that change was. Um, so I ran these reports, the same as when I did last quarter for you folks. I think you liked looking up there at the top and seeing where we're at for fiscal year. Completed as of the end of June thirtieth. We're at uh, seventy four point seven nine percent. Uh, so if we come over and we look on revenues, that first page and we're looking over on the right side, it's letting us know the percentage of our budget used. Uh, one thing I want to point out, and you guys are very used to hearing it, is on taxes, we know that that's a timing issue. That's why that shows that we're only six point five two percent collected. Uh, so overall looking just fine, um, we're actually bringing in a little more. On uh, some of them are over budget for revenues coming in, so that's always good news to us, right? Any questions on those revenues?
I know the board always gives me grief, but I did send my taxes in, so there will be a. I know they always said that when Angler sends his taxes in, it's gonna look better out here. It's in there, so.
Okay, uh, next page is your expenditures. For general fund, um, just wanted to point out, one of them looks real wonky, uh. Uh, that's the uh. Sheriff's Department there, that is the timing of that Motorola reimbursement. So we uh, we have to pay, just like Sheriff just talked about now, we get the approval from you folks to pay those bills, then the state reimburses us, so. Just keep in mind, that's gonna. Even itself out there, so nothing to be alarmed with there. Nothing seems too, too crazy out of whack when I was looking through here at all. And when we come down to the very bottom, overall, looking at the general fund, we're doing great. We're at seventy three point six nine percent. And that's even with uh, Sheriff's Department, you know, showing over because of that Motorola reimbursement, so. Uh, looking pretty good. We're supposed to be at seventy four point seven nine and we're right, we're right close there. Any questions on those uh, expenditures?
I have a question, if we could back up to the revenues.
Sure.
And the other income. At a hundred ninety nine percent. What's driving that increase?
That one is most likely. Uh. Those reimbursements coming in. I wouldn't be surprised. From Motorola. That's where those with other income kind of, if it doesn't fit in one of those other categories, that's kind of where everything. Everything else goes into, so um. Grant revenues, those kind of things, all of that is going into there. So that's probably what's driving that one, so I. We're at a hundred and ten thousand over budget. Keep in mind too, that will uh. Those two are gonna balance each other out too, so. As far as detail, I can certainly print a report out. If you'd like to see the detail on what makes the, that number up for you.
Um, yeah, I mean, it's not too. I'm consuming.
Not at all, sir.
Issue, yeah.
I will do that and I'll send it to the entire board.
All right.
Yeah.
Appreciate that.
No problem. Make a note here. Yeah, anytime the board wishes to see the detail of what makes up a number, please feel free to ask. Was, was there anything on expenditures?
Just when you were looking at the percentages. You need to understand like the parks is a seasonal business, so. Their business goes up and down and then also. Timing and self spent at a certain. Long period or quarter, so. So. Always kind of look at them and kind of figure out those. Where those are at with Russell or Stinkle, the both of them. I'm sure there's a couple of them that are seasoned there.
Yeah. And that, those are gonna fall on that next page uh, for our other funds. I put, I keep in mind too that this adds up. Percent budget used for revenues and then it adds up expenditures and then it adds them together, so. Uh, that's not really an accurate. That total's not always accurate. I would just look at each, the percentage for each line, so the, the percentage for revenues for parks, that first one there. Uh, looks like they're seventy two percent collected on what they budgeted. And expenditures, they're forty percent spent. Again, like Chairman just said. This is when we're gonna really start spending some money out of parks because this is prime camping season, so just keep those things in mind there. I didn't see anything that stuck out to me that was alarming here. It looks like everybody, those other funds that, that you folks budget for are doing quite well. Any questions on those? Other funds?
Uh, all right then. Questions on that? We'll move on to the fiscal year twenty six.
One thing I would like to point out before we um, kind of dig into this is on your. Capital improvement request summary for other funds. There has been a change that I'll make in that, so when that's uh. That'll be updated under parks for the zero turn mower. That is gonna say twenty thousand instead of twelve thousand. The estimated trade in value is going to say twenty five hundred instead of eight thousand. But no budget change. The numbers entered in BSNA for the budget are correct. Only the sheet that we're looking at was uh, I typed it in incorrectly or I had the wrong information, so. Um, Alexis pointed that out to me, which I appreciate, so that I can get this, this particular page updated for you. Again, no change in parks' actual budgeted numbers. I just wanted to point that out, that you are gonna see a change on this page. Brian, do you want to? No?
You're doing very well.
Uh, so our main changes here, you can see down at the bottom that we've added. Uh, some money back to this. We were sitting at uh. Seventy thousand. Last time, um, come back to you with this draft. Now we're sitting at ninety five thousand. The main driver of that is we had some adjustments, more adjustments to the market rate implementation and related uh, benefits that go with that. A lot of that is. This is the prime opportunity to, when we gave the uh. Market rate adjustment summary sheets to the department heads, so there was one for each employee who was a part of this wage study. We asked the department heads to really thoroughly look that over, looking at the steps they're on, looking at their anniversary dates. Uh, looking at, because a higher date and an auxiliary date, if you will, are two totally different things. That really impacts the employee on where they fall in a step and when they would receive that. We determined, um, while we didn't, the department hats, they did great. Uh, they determined there was a lot of inconsistencies in our payroll program. So we made sure that those corrections have been made now. Uh, our payroll program is now stronger. And more accurate than I believe it ever has been. Uh, really happy that. This gave us that opportunity to do a deep dive into it. Um, so that was a lot of it right there. Was looking at those changes and uh, those played an impact on when people's stuff increases were, or if they were. Already say at. Past their, on our current scale, we only go up to five years, right? So if they were, say. Been here seven, eight years. They would fall off. They wouldn't, they would go right to a stop ten on our new scale. However, if that was inputted wrong, they may have actually had steps coming to them. Um, or flip side of that, maybe they didn't, so. That corrected that, so that's why you're seeing such. A difference there. The other ones we. Were just normal things that we found, um, that we needed to add in there, uh, just stuff that trickles in towards the end and then it gets put in there, for instance. Uh, for emergency management, uh, their rapid SLS, that has to do with their AEDs. Uh, we needed to put in that subscription cost of ninety one twenty one. We increased contracted services for uh, the correctional facility for Siemens Industry for their maintenance contract. Thirty grand went in there for that. Uh, and then we seen that MMDC had a four percent increase, so we made sure we noted that.
Well, Siemens contract is not signed yet. Uh, I believe Director Shoemaker and uh. The sheriff are looking or working with Siemens to kind of see what exactly we need on that and not, so this was a more of a placeholder. An estimated cost.
Yeah, we want to make sure we, we put something in here so that we did have, you know, thirty thousand dollars of price. Uh, we already know we're anticipating it. We wanted it to be in the budget, so we added that in. MIBC, I updated uh, the adjustment to revenue that there was uh. Indirect costs. Were recalculated uh, when um. Public Defender Houseman turned, uh, submitted his uh. Revised grant application and that, their indirect costs are based off from their salaries and fringes. Revised grant application and that, their indirect costs are based off from their salaries and fringes. So that that got updated. That means indirect cost gets updated and it reduced the amount coming into general fund by three thousand eight hundred sixty seven dollars. Just to make sure that, you know, that went in there. We have a transfer in that increased from the CPL fund and that transfers in directly to the Clerk's Department. To help with the salaries and wages there for those girls, so. Those were our main drivers of changes. Any questions?
So I just have a question on the the first draft. Compared to current budget, there are some increases, well, again, but we don't see that here. For example, hats. That's what's going to be increased, correct?
Hats, hats maintained. I put in their original contract. Numbers, that number's not changed from the first draft.
Okay, what is the current budget for hats?
I believe it was one seventy was the main contract stat, and then there's a secondary contract to take and dispose of. The dead animals and stuff, but their contract was made for. So I don't have that number offhand.
I have to look it up, the actual contract.
So that number was inputted at the beginning.
It's not just the hats, I just wondering what other changes were made from the current budget that we're not aware of.
Any changes that were made are are listed right here on the summary sheet.
Or when you say current budget, are you talking?
From the very first, first draft.
No, this is all listed right here. Anything that was changed on first draft is on this.
It's on the recommended reconciliation. You can see changes where things are are getting added to or subtracted from.
Like you'll see the decrease of property taxes because of the central business district seventy five percent capture, just all those different. Health insurance increases because we underestimated on that, so anything that was changed in that first draft. Is on this sheet. For the plan that was done in previous years as well, we kind of followed the same mechanism that. Former Administrator Frost and Finance Director Frank was kind of did the same kind of sheet.
No, no changes to the budget process at all compared to what you were used to seeing.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions on the budget? And then. Brian, we wanted to make sure we let you folks know too then that. The. Barring that there's not some huge, huge change to this budget, which it doesn't sound like there is, then the recommended full budget document would come. To the board.
On its next meeting.
At the next full board meeting.
For practice of last year, then you'll be studying the public hearing and all the. Legal details on that. Everything can still be changed at this point, because then when you have the public hearing, it's not a. It's not sandstone until the board formally proves it on September sixteenth. And just to let you know that for the next meeting on Tuesday, I may not be here. I moved my daughter into college. So. Finance Director Whitmer will be at my spot, but if I can get it done early enough, I will be up, but I just want to let you know that I may not be.
Just one more quick question. We are still budgeting money for. Doing something with the administration building or replacing it?
Yes, sir. There is debt payment. Put in for, I want to believe, five hundred thousand dollars for more of the interest only slug of it. Because we don't know what the actual costs are, but five hundred thousand is put in there, plus we have. Close to four, a little over four hundred thousand for rental space and stuff, so. When we finally get in there, we're obviously not going to be renting and then that money will be moved over on top of the five hundred. In future budgets as we move forward.
And we did discuss that and we made sure we brought that up too on our first draft, just to make sure that that the board was aware that we are planning for that. We've got a plan for something.
I remember that, but I couldn't remember the.
Oh, that's fine, that's fine, but yes, that is built in there.
Very good. Any other questions?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And moving along, we don't have any intergovernmental affairs, no administrative controller issues, no unfinished business. No new business. Brings down to general public comments. General public comment.
No, I don't.
Say.
No, there shouldn't, there's nobody.
Okay. Seeing no one for general public comment announcements. Is there any announcements?
We got rain.
It's still raining.
Is it still raining? Good, so, yeah, we can live with that.
All right, is there anything else? Is it good in the group? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Support.
Moving supported, so we are adjourned at eleven thirty.